A word.
We're gonna have to call this zoning board appeals order.
July 24th of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indefensible with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody getting here? And we will have a roll call.
Nice drum.
Here.
Lucky.
Here.
Walton.
Here.
Niki.
Here.
Next on the agenda for the approval of minutes.
I accept the minutes as they are.
Make the motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of July 24th of 2025.
I'll second that. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any change? I know we did all that, but we're good.
Yeah, we're good.
Is there any comments, public comments not related to what we're doing tonight? Hearing done. We can move on. So, this is a public hearing, we have three requests. And I believe we're just going the order that's listed. I don't think we need to change anything. So, the first one is for a use variance request on 128 North Warren. A Jack Frizzle variance request to allow two residential units on a property zoned RP. For those that don't know, RP is a residential professional.
Would you like me to start?
Go ahead and start.
The property is located at the corner of Spruce and Warren. 128 North Warren is a duplex on a parcel of 1711 362 001. The duplex reportedly had a variety of uses in the past, mostly residential and commercial. According to its tax history, the property was once owned by the city of Big Rapids in 2004, sold to PRH Gray Development, which was then sold to Lama Linda LLC, and eventually to Jack Frizzle in 2015. According to the utility billing, when we went back, one side has been occupied by a single-family owner for the entirety of Frizzle's ownership, and then the other side had multiple occupants throughout the year, throughout the years. The houses, surrounding houses are primarily residential, aside from 120 North Warren, which is where Bush Insurance Agency resides. So, basically, our zoning ordinance in the RP district only allows for a single-family residential use. And then if it's owner occupied, it can have an additional occupant in that property, or it can have a commercial entity in the properties, depending on the type of commercial, like offices, small business type things, not large commercial. And so, what the applicant is asking is that both sides be able to be used for a single-family home, as a single-family home, as a duplex. Staff recommended approval with the stipulation that they have to be single-family, that it can't be used for multi-family, or for, you know, the four unrelated occupants that we allow in our three district.
Okay. Oh, one question. Is the one side occupied currently?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right. So, we have the opportunity for the applicant to make a presentation. Is Jack Frizzle here? And make sure you state your name and where you live.
My name is Jack Frizzle, good evening.
Frizzle, sorry.
As I stated in my application, presently in Big Rapids, the supply of office spaces is larger than the demand. And the supply of good, clean residential, non-student units are in short supply. So, that's the reason that I would like to, I'm applying for the variances so that I can put both sides residential, as Michelle stated.
Okay.
Any questions?
Not yet. There's an opportunity for those in, let's see, what do I do that? Anybody against this? Anybody not in favor? Hearing done, we shall move on. Any written materials or anything like that that you're aware of?
Staff did not hear from anyone over the phone or any written complaints or information on this.
Okay. We can skip the rebuttal because we don't have to. So, that part, the whole of hearing is closed, and we will go into talking about it.
I have a question for Michelle. Is he currently enrolled in the Big Rapids rental program that's, like, with you?
It has been in the past.
So, he's not current on zoning or coding or?
Have we done rental inspections there, Jack? I think one side we have.
Okay.
I know we have, I don't know if we have this year yet.
Okay. And he's owned it since 2015?
Yeah, prior to just recently, it's been office use both sides.
Recently, within the last year, couple of years, or longer than that?
Longer than that, it's just been within the last several months that it's been residential on one side.
Okay.
And I think I've been contacted by the city to apply for the registration of it being residential.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And are they one-bedroom or two-bedroom?
Two each side.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
No, not at this time.
My only concern is that he would get enrolled. My only concern would be he'd get enrolled in the city program.
Okay.
He'd get infected. Yeah.
Sounds like that will be part of it.
That would be my, my only, like, condition, I guess we could put on that.
Okay.
Cause I would agree, there is more, you know.
Yeah, I did make note of, I did make note of that, that was one thing I, and I like the way for office spaces currently in high supply and low demand.
Yeah.
That's kind of important, cause there's a lot of, they want businesses, but not necessarily right next to where they live, maybe, I don't know. Except for maybe the small amount of pop and where is that?
Yeah, and we don't have a lot of rentals for people that, you know, without being students.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. And it sounds like it's been almost set up for that in the past. Or it could be.
And I guess it being so on RP, it could go back to that, too. If you sold it to
It could be.
Another person, that could be
It could go back to offices.
It could go, like, to insurance and then live there.
Yep.
Yeah, it could be.
In the future, if that was to change.
If that was, yeah, if that was the case. And I think this kind of also goes with the master plan.
Right.
Our master plan is, is for kind of a mixed use. And mixed use, I think, is a little better than RP. It's not our decision to change that.
Right, correct.
Michelle, next door to him, is it a house or is it a business? Is it all businesses along that Warren, or is it a house with a residence?
It's mostly residential in there.
Okay. So, I know, was it Bush on the end, right?
Bush is right behind the post office.
Okay. So, it's kind of mixed yet on that street?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if we kind of go over the analysis as we go along, property could not be reasonably used for the purpose permitted in the zone. That for four, according to the master plan, housing would, according to the master plan, housing is needed in more central locations, and this would help create a denser population near downtown. One family at a time, so. Against, previous uses have been conforming with the ordinance. Maybe it has, but if you look, instead of looking backwards, if we look forward to what we want to do with the master plan, and if anybody reads, read the master plan, we want this type of housing for people to live. So, I can see that not being an issue.
Correct, I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
Second one, that the appeal results from a unique circumstance peculiar to the property and not from general neighborhood conditions. The RP is, for the RP in general, has a lot of non-conforming properties. There we go. Because it is a new zoning district. Staff is unsure of the timeframe, it has been residential on both sides, but no complaints have been received. Which again, it's because RP is a transition zone, it would make sense to keep it mixed use. And I think the same logic applies, in my mind, that we're going, try to, we're trying to go through a mixed use type of a situation, and maybe at some point, the city will change what the RP is, or just get rid of that designation and change it to mixed use. Again, not our decision, but
Right.
And plus, I looked at this, you know, not, I'm not sure how long it's been, you know, one side, as a, the timeframe has been residential on both sides. Number three, that the use requested by the variance would not alter the basic character of the area. It's a, it looks like a housing-style family setting for two.
Yeah.
It blends in.
It blends in.
Right.
It blends in, I don't, I don't see any, any changing, unless you want to put up a few bushes or something like that. Some aesthetics, that's, that's great. And against, the character of RP is that it's a transition zone. Well, again, the same, the same thing. And I, and I didn't quite understand that, and I don't know if I need a little more explanation. Approving this could lead to a quicker transition between commercial downtown to residential. Okay. We want residents living downtown. I think mixed use would do the same thing.
Correct.
That the alleged hardship has not been created by any person presently having interest in the property. Four, you would have to assume that the choice to moving was made without consulting zoning. Comments on that? I'll get it, hold it.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, I just, yeah.
I think what staff was trying to say there is that the likeliness is, a lot of people don't know zoning or know what the RP district allows, cause it is more of one of our more unique districts, where, you know, everyone, or I shouldn't say everyone, most people generally know what's allowed in R1, and then most people generally know that R3 is multi-family. But there's probably a significant number of people in the community who are not aware what, one, that we have an RP district, and two, what it entails.
Okay.
Right.
That helps clarify.
It was new to me.
For number four, against us, having someone move into a, you know, when there's already someone else next door who is not the owner, is explicitly against the zoning. The applicant has been a property owner in Big Rapids for some time and should have been aware of zoning rules and requirements. What, we can go back to situations, I know we look at one, one property at a time, but situations where that may be true, but it's changed, because in my mind, I think we're trying to look forward. And looking forward to what the city's gonna happen the next five or 10 years. I don't have a real issue with that.
So, it's called, it's called a duplex, whether it's business or?
Yeah. It looks like they're calling it a duplex already.
Right.
I mean, was it called that before?
Well, I think just the design of the structure wouldn't feel it, and it's called a duplex.
Right.
It appears like every duplex that's
So, it's been remodeled, I take it, then? If it was a commercial building, like you said, a couple of years ago, then you've remodeled it to make it a bedrooms?
Initially, it was a duplex for residential use both sides. The person that I bought it from put in a wall to create an office for himself. And then after I bought it, I took that wall out, and it's been used for office with that wall out until most recently.
Okay.
Okay.
So, now it's been completely conform back to two bedrooms and then two bedrooms on two different units?
Yes.
Okay.
One thing I noted, I think was noted earlier, too, there's been no complaints. No one's really complained about it.
Right. It was on a corner, so you probably wouldn't notice too much anyways.
No.
Being on a corner.
True.
Adequate parking in the back.
And you have adequate parking in the back.
Yeah, so you're talking about two families, two bedrooms, so the parking would be like up to?
I think six, I think we're allowed.
Our ordinance requires one per bedroom.
One per bedroom.
Looks like four per.
And I would say if there's, yeah.
And it looks like, if you're looking at the picture, it looks like there's a lease room for that.
It drove behind it.
Right.
Driving by. Okay.
Okay.
Well, we have three ways to do this, we can approve it as-is. We can approve it with conditions, or we can deny it. Anybody willing to? I'm good with this all the way around, I think there's some conditions.
Yeah, we just put some conditions on it, yeah.
Conditions on there that I think would be good.
Yes.
Conditions?
Mm-hmm.
Be in the rental program through the city that's required.
Rental program, and that's gonna be single-family.
Single-family.
Both sides.
Non-related.
Non-related.
Right.
Related.
Related. Single-family, related.
Single. Each unit would be, if you just say single-family, that covers it.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, yeah, expected to make sure everything is up to code.
I can live with that.
Good.
I'm good with that, I agree.
Okay.
You know, you wanna write that, or you wanna speak that out?
Make the motion?
You can, if you wanna.
I need you to read your conditions, Chief.
Yes, go ahead, Michelle.
Okay. The conditions I have written are that the units be limited to single-family on both sides, and that if they are rentals, they would need to be enrolled within the rental programs.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
So, the motion approves the application, so we move that the use, the use of variance application for 128 North Warren Avenue, 711 362-001 be approved to allow two single-family units. Application does meet the standard set in sections 13.5 and 13.6, and with the following conditions, be enrolled in the program, and single-family unit.
Okay.
That's essentially the motion. If you clean it up a little bit, that would be good, too. But that's, that's the motion, so. Ready for a vote?
Sure. You need a second.
A second.
Okay, there's a second. Annabelle.
Nice drum.
Yes.
Lucky?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Niki?
Yes.
And it is good to go? Thank you.
Yeah, just call Craig, call Craig tomorrow to get enrolled. Get it, get it going.
Sure.
You don't have to stay, you can leave. You can stay, but no, feel obligated.
Okay, on to the second one, is a non-use variance request for 402 Second Avenue, Big Rapids Housing Commissioners Commission. Variance to allow a duplex on property less than 12,000 square feet. So, Michelle.
Yeah, so this one is a little bit different than the last one we talked about. The Big Rapids Housing Commission is proposing a new project to allow a duplex on the property. The property is zoned R2, which does allow for duplex properties. However, our zoning ordinance requires that the R2 zoning dis, the duplexes in the R2 zoning district have to have six, 12,000 square feet, or 6,000 square feet per side, per unit. So, the, the lot doesn't meet that requirement. It also doesn't meet the requirement of how wide the lot width is. So, if it was a single-family residence, we would only require a 50-foot lot. But with the duplex, we require an 80-foot lot. And then they also are asking for a variance on the number of parking spaces. We require one per bedroom, as we just talked about in the last one. They're only providing two parking spaces on site. However, they are reserving space across the road at the Housing Commission's overflow parking, or visitor parking area, that they have for their other property, to, that these properties would be able to utilize. As far as staff's recommendation, staff made a recommendation that we approve the variance request. There's other duplexes in this neighborhood, and I think you have a map that kind of shows where those are at. We, from my research, it looks like the, at one time, our ordinance did not have the 12,000 square foot requirement for duplexes in the R2 district. I don't exactly know when it was added, but with the time those duplexes were built, they were allowed. And so, since then, we have changed our zoning ordinance in a way that has made it harder to put an approved use on a piece of property because there's not enough square footage. And there's not enough road frontage. So, that's where staff, and with the Housing Commission owning the property and having that parking across the road, I think that gives you a just, it's, it's just a different level of comfort that, it's not that they're not providing parking, it's just not at that site. And our ordinance does have language in it that says you can have parking on an adjacent site. You could go into the weeds and decide if across the street is considered adjacent or not. I didn't dig that far in. I would guess that it probably isn't in our ordinance on what adjacent means. I've never seen that. So, staff recommends approval. Housing Commission's here, if you have any questions. MOISD is also here, if you have any questions, cause they will be the ones who are working on the project.
Okay. Whoever wants to speak in favor of this, please do. State your name and where you are.
Hello, everybody, oh, I should wait till I get up here. Hello, everybody. I'm Linda Miller from the Big Rapids Housing Commission, and we are proposing to build a duplex on this lot, which is directly across from Parkview Village. We, is, is our mission to increase the housing stock in Big Rapids. We already have 287 public housing apartments in and around the vicinity. I will say, first of all, that not very many of our tenants have more than one vehicle. Sometimes they do, but not very often, so that's part of the reason why we feel comfortable offering the additional parking across the street. The area already is mostly multi-family, so another duplex would definitely fit in the neighborhood, in our opinion. As Michelle said, we are partnering with the MOISD's Construction Trades Program. They were looking for another lot to build a house on. They already are building a house on our Mechanic Street property. We donated a lot to them for that, they're finishing that up. They're looking for another project that's close to the Career Center to cut down on transportation time to and from, to give the students more time to work. So, that's why we came up with this idea. We purchased the lot several years ago, and I don't remember exactly, I think it's in my application. It was in real rough shape, we called it the Cat House at one point.
2019, I think.
Thank you, thank you, April. Which is why we tore it down, so we kind of did create the problem in a way, but we feel like we first improved the neighborhood. It's always been one of our long-term goals to redevelop it, not knowing that the way it stands, you could not build anything on it. We are really excited to hopefully partner on this project with the Career Center. And if anybody has any questions for me.
What made you choose a duplex versus just another single house?
A couple of reasons, one, to provide more housing. Most of our housing that we provide now, it has some sort of government regulations attached to it. And we would like to provide more housing that does not have government regulations attached to it. So, as far as income limits, and we, we see a lot of people that we can't help because they make too much money, they make more than our low-income limits, you know? We were just actually talking about that before the meeting, you know, like Ferris professors, people at the schools, people that work jobs in the city that don't qualify.
So, it won't be based on low income then?
It will not be.
It would be whoever wants to sign up and lease with from you.
Yes, it will be for people that we can't assist in our other housing, and most of our other housing.
I noticed in the floor plan below, you're gonna have a basement in it?
Mm-hmm.
And those are gonna be, have egress windows to be able to get out, correct?
They have, it has to have an egress window by code in order to have a bedroom down there.
I just wanted to make sure I understood all that, like.
And we did that on purpose to make sure that our footprint was small enough to provide the parking and the driveway that we needed to, so.
Right.
Good question.
You have two pictures, one, oh, this is a duplex, or essentially a duplex.
Yeah, one, the other's site plan, a picture of the ground level, first floor, and then a basement picture.
Oh, okay, that's, okay, sorry.
Yes. I said earlier, it's an Eric Richardson original, that's Eric Richardson. He's the, he is the teacher of the Construction Trades Program at the Career Center, and Josh Bold from the Macostasioa ISD, so. They are rip-roaring to go on this project, no pressure, kind of pressure.
So, this one's the first floor?
That's first one.
That one is?
Yes, it's below, yes.
One below.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I'm an architect.
Yes.
Sorry.
We're not either. I'm impressed we got it to look as good as we did.
Dr. Redd missions.
Yes.
Oh, I have another question, I drove by there today, or yesterday. I noticed that there's like an indentation for the school, elementary school, people to park and pick up children there. What, how are you assessing that, how are you doing that?
We did talk to the city about that, I don't know if you want to talk about it, Michelle?
Yeah, I could answer that question, so we, I don't, it was not done, I don't think, for the elementary school.
Okay, well, I was just assuming that I saw cars there.
Yeah, I'm sure cars.
I asked the same question, April, cause I wasn't sure.
I was just, you know, I'm just out there.
If, once they do it, we can, Mark Gifford, City Manager, and I have been out there to look at it, and we'll probably just put it back to be a normal curb.
Okay, like grass and, okay.
Um, unless they want it for their own.
I didn't know who, like, oh, I didn't know who, like, who owned it, or was part of something, or?
It's city right-of-way.
Okay.
Um, but we think it was done, because the original house was, that was there, might not have, there's no driveway there.
So, parking, then, I take it?
And so, my guess is they were
To get off the street during storm removal, probably, I'm guessing.
Probably, that was probably what, a solution at the time, and
Is that on Jefferson or Second Avenue?
It's on Jefferson, and we would, we would probably put it back to grass just to make it so it's not so attractive for people to park there, somebody lived there.
There's like a, it's all like, yeah.
Right, it's been paved, the right-of-way's been paved there.
Other question, too, in regards to the site plan. Due to you're gonna be putting parking over here, is that gonna make a problem for the current residents that have visitors come?
You mean on the house next door?
On the existing, on the trial levels, or whatever, the other side, like, you're calling this visitor parking?
The highlighted circle, that's visitor parking, and hardly anybody uses it.
Okay.
Like I said, we don't have very many people that have more than one vehicle. Like I said, we don't have very many people that have more than one vehicle. So our current, our tenants on that side of the street already have one parking space. So it's very rarely utilized.
And then my other concern about this is that if you decide to put people over here to walk, there's really like no identification, like crosswalk for them? Are they, how are you gonna address them to be a safety issue?
Oh, I think a crosswalk would, I don't know that we could do a crosswalk.
I didn't know that was.
That's a police decision. So that's the chief of police's decision on the topic.
And we're, I mean, I don't think we're talking about more than a couple people, you know, a couple cars over there.
I just, I wanna still make that identify of, you know, you're still making people not be accessible next that they're willing to walk to. You're kind of forcing them to walk across the street.
Right.
In other words, it's something to look into.
Yes.
Cause I.
If the project is itself.
Yes. Right, and that's something I definitely can talk to the police department about. Yeah, I'm not sure how that works.
I know, I rented and I'm paying, you know, X amount of dollars and I'm now forced to walk across the street. I wouldn't like that.
Well, only for your second vehicle, but yes, if it was a couple and they both had, yeah. They would have to draw straws over who is walking across the street.
There's room to put one car on them.
Yeah, there's room for one car.
Yeah, right.
In the plan.
So they would know that, that they'd had to walk across the street.
That would definitely be, yes, yes.
I just wanted to make identify that, definitely also that you're, what you're really not calling visitor. And the visitor parking area across the street is really gonna be designated for the new building.
Right, yes, yes. And we would make that clear to anybody before they sign a lease.
I would want.
So would you designate it to them?
I would say with signs and stuff somehow, because, I mean, you know what I'm saying, like.
Right.
If you're, you'd have to designate, this is for parking for, cause what happens if they, somebody had a party and now all these spots are filled, let's say, or whatever, birthday party, whatever. And now I'm coming home from work and I have nowhere to park.
It is visitor parking, so yes, we probably should designate it for that, yes, and for those people. Now I see what you're saying. That's a very good point.
I mean, I'm just.
Yep, yep.
And what you're saying is that, yes, right now technically it's not used, but you're also not designating that. You're saying it's still visitors, so open parking.
But we will. We will designate two spaces, the most convenient ones for across the street. I see what you're saying, yes.
And then at that point also, do you plow this area for winter time for them?
Oh, yes, we plow all of our parking lots.
Okay.
I, I misunderstood you, April. I thought you meant if the people in the duplex were having a party and then you saw those spaces. But you meant if somebody in the apartment, so.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, no, we would, we would designate that.
Yeah, the designated parking because it's.
Right, yes.
Yeah, you're trying to make it.
Yeah, I would not like it if somebody was parked in my parking spot across the street.
Well, I mean, I know it's kinda open and I get that part, no one's really using it, but it's gonna be that one or two chances of.
Right.
And I would hate for some altercations to happen, just.
Altercations by middle name. We have lots more housing than just the two hundred and eighty-seven, uh, at Parkview and Evergreen, so I do, I deal with.
I'm trying to avoid that for you.
Neighborhood dispute all the time, April.
I'm trying to avoid that, though.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
Other questions, or right now?
Okay, yeah.
Somebody, are you, you asked a question, I was going to say.
Oh.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
We may ask more, but not yet.
All right, one more, um, for the school. What, um, is your timeframe in building? Like, what's your, this was to go forward? What's your schedule?
So our program, we wanna start right away, try to get a foundation in before the winter months. Um, so it's gonna be October, November.
Correct.
Uh, we are a two-year process, so we were, we are slower.
Correct.
This is a t- a teaching base, uh, learning atmosphere, so. And it's a two-year program for the students, so it will sit idle. So if I get started, we get started in November, October, November, by springtime, we're hoping to have it roofed, windows, doors locked up and have it watertight.
Interior then.
So it was.
So what is your plan to keep the area safe, being that there's an elementary there? Are you gonna be fencing it off with row fencing, that snow fencing?
At this moment, no, but the, uh, idea of fencing it off came up earlier in the summer, so. But at the moment, no, it's.
Cause if you do a foundation, there's gonna be a big hole, like.
So.
You know?
In, in construction, always required for us, for my OSHA, is to have it taped off. It's not a fence, so on Mechanic Street, we put a snow fence up. Snow fence is just a deterrent. It's not an actual fence that would keep people out.
Would be better off if you waited until spring to do the foundation, so you could go a little bit quicker within that year to get the building out versus leaving it dormant over the winter being.
Spring, it, spring, so you were done in May or June.
I know, May, June, okay.
The stoppage would happen in the summer.
Yeah, it's idle for the summer. And, you know, we'll have subs come in, so some of the stuff we cannot do, we have to have special, you know, licenses, so.
Correct.
They would do some work in the summer when we get it watertight, but.
Okay.
The spring, it's, it wouldn't be feasible. It would sit way open.
I would add that our staff is up and down that street all day, every day, and we do have cameras there. And so, um, I don't know that one is actually pointing on that lot, but there's one right across the street. So, um, it would not be a bad idea for us to maybe add a camera there.
That would be my only concern, is that kids will be kids and being, you know, I would be again, the safety part of, you know, just because.
Tell the, have the parents tell, don't go there.
Yeah, okay. Yes, kids will be kids, and I just, it would be the safety issue is what I'd have, so.
Yeah, of being fenced or somehow more secure, being that there's also the elementary there.
Yeah, yeah.
The elementary's on the other side.
I know, but if you look where you drive, it's like right at the end of that street. Right at the end of the street is, is the school down there, so.
It's always good to make assumptions, not too deep on that, but I'm sure safety issues will be a concern of those, of things that you will take into account.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Anybody opposed to this thing, if they wanna speak? I don't hear anybody speaking, so we'll move on to that. Um, any writ materials?
No, staff didn't, anyone.
Part of the public hearing is closed, and so let's move on to talk about this a little more. Questions, other questions? One thing I was, I, I just, you're, you're asking for two spaces for parking, correct? Okay, cause I'm looking at what I think is the proposed, we have what the ordinance requires for a single-family, R two, seventy-five hundred square feet, fifty by, fifty by thirty with two parking space. Are you looking for a duplex or a single-family?
Duplex.
This would be a duplex for a single families.
So the requirement for that is twelve thousand square feet?
Yes.
Yep. So you're asking, you're, are you proposing seventy-two hundred square feet? Or are you proposing?
The lot is seventy-two hundred square.
Okay, that, that's what, okay. I would say that should be existing then. The lot's seventy-two hundred square feet.
And not proposed, right? That's where you're.
Seventy-two by thirty, that's what it is currently. Still with two parking spots that is there. Okay. I know we looked at one a few years ago, when they wanted to change the footing on something like that. And we're talking about a difference of forty-eight hundred square feet versus if it was a single-family, three hundred square feet.
Right.
This is a project. Seems like a lot, but in my mind, but maybe not.
No, we can do two levels.
I'm sorry, you do what?
There are two levels.
It'll be two levels. It's not a single level.
That's true. It'll be bedrooms, is it the second level?
There'll be bedrooms downstairs, it looks like. There's two upstairs and there's one downstairs, if I understand, from what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
That's why I was concerned about the egress getting out downstairs, if that's in that plan.
They have to do that by law.
Well, I just wanna make sure. And a lot of people wanna skip the law, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Just making sure. I want it on record, so. I mean, it looks like the, the, um, picture, there was a picture, I think there was a picture. The, for them, they don't, you don't have an elevation picture, do you? Did you give us a location?
It's like a rendering.
A rendering? My pictures of renderings. Give us a rendering, yeah. So the rendering looks like it's gonna be somewhat, you know, normal to what is in the area there now, across the street.
Yeah.
So it blends into the neighborhood.
Just convince me that it's okay to go forty-eight hundred square feet more. Maybe the two levels will take care of that.
Forty-eight hundred square feet more.
Well, as a, as a recommendation, it says ordinance for duplex is twelve thousand square feet.
Yeah, squ- twelve thousand square feet of a lot. The lot's required to be twelve hun- twelve thousand square feet. Their lot is only seventy-two.
So that's what you have to change to make it smaller.
That's, that's a big difference.
That is a, a fairly big difference.
That's why I had asked why they just convert a single house up versus a duplex.
I mean, it could.
I mean, then they, would just be another house.
Then it would be another house.
Right. We're just trying to add as much housing as possible, and there are already two duplexes, very similar.
On the other side, do they have basements in them?
There are two duplexes within the block.
Other, other side, when you drive around the other side. Uh, do they have basements? What's their, do we know anything about them?
I.
Have we, have we, okay, so my question is, because the, they, you own those. You, how was your, um, like inspections happen? How does, is that part of the city's responsibility, or is it yours?
So our single-family housing is inspected. Our apartments are inspected by the city.
How often?
So we have a house down the street from that that we rent that is being inspected next month. We get inspected whenever the city sent, we're in the rental program, so we get inspected whenever the city sends us a.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
Yes, I was just saying, the ones you have existing, are these two other existing duplexes you showed, are those yours?
No, that's why I don't know if they have basements. I'm sorry.
Gotcha.
Which ones?
The ones that they're talking about in this picture, they're showing me the two other duplexes.
That's others.
And that's not, that's why I was asking if it was theirs.
Gotcha.
Yeah, there, it's right around the corner, so this is your vacant lot, and you literally drive around there, there next, on the other corner, and then next to it. And it's the same, it's the same looking type of, um.
Yeah.
Uh, front to it.
Grinds are great.
Yeah, it's the same when you look at, when I drove by, it's the same type of, um, skaman, profile.
I know we had discussions about sport footage.
Yes.
With duplexes.
Yes.
Previously.
Yes.
And, um, I know this has more stuff going on with the, with Moisette being involved and other people involved, it's a good project.
Well, it doesn't mean that they still can't just build a single house over there. I mean, in a way, I mean, it's still gonna give the students something to work on.
True.
And, and the program that they're offered through school. It's just.
That is true as well.
I do know.
I like the duplex, I mean, I like the idea with duplex. I like the idea of getting more people where you can get more people. Okay, so don't.
Yeah.
Don't, I'm not against that at all. And property sometimes can be at a premium, and the size of the property is obviously.
Do you currently have a list of people that are waiting to move in somewhere? Do we have a?
For a market-rate apartment? No, because we don't really have, we don't really offer that right now. We just get calls, a lot of people who are looking for that, so we see a need, for sure.
And the Mechanic Street house is gonna be finished when?
The Career Center's Mechanic Street?
Yeah.
Hopefully by December. We wanna put it on the market in December. No, it's not a rental, it is.
That'll be, that'll be on for, for sale.
Right, and they're just.
Is that still gonna be income-based, or is that gonna be just?
For market.
Okay.
For sale.
But these are gonna be leasing through you.
Okay. And I do know when we, every ti- I moved a lot. And every time, the most difficult thing was finding, uh, cause I, we never, we always wanted to rent first so we could explore the area. And that was, you expect, when we moved here twenty years ago, I mean, we ended up being in a terrible rental. And they wouldn't be allowed to be.
We have a history of pretty successful projects, and yes, we take very good care of our projects. And, um, that is part of the reason that we're kind of excited to do this because where we see the need is where there's not rent restrictions or income restrictions. And, you know, people moving to town, they have basically two options, student housing and income-based housing. There's not a lot of housing available for people that.
It is, it's.
Don't meet those two criteria.
Yeah.
It's still difficult, even.
Okay, I guess.
And we were in a duplex or townhouse twice, and it, and that's about the size. And it worked out well for bank five.
If we go, I know the staff analysis is real good to that, but I was looking at these other four points. And I was just trying to make it clear in my mind that, number one, ensure that public services and facilities affected by proposed land use or activity will be capable of accommodating increased service and facility loads caused by the land use or activity. In other words, you're gonna provide the correct services, be the correct parking. You're gonna not do anything that you're not supposed to. Number two, you're gonna make it look nice, protect the natural environment and conserve natural resources and energy. Ensure capability with adjacent use of land. That's, to me, that's, obviously you wanna keep your neighbors happy.
Sure.
And they wanna, everybody wants to go along. And promote the use of the land in a socially and economically viable manner. Offering places to live is socially unacceptable. So, yeah.
Who's responsible for the mowing of the property and that?
My staff.
I think the Housing Commission does that, yeah. So if we look at the ana- analysis, and let's, let's see next, and maybe again, I can be convinced. The ordinance restrictions unreasonably prevents the owner from using the property for a permitted use. Yeah, right now it does. The permitted use for R two is a single-family or duplex, but property is smaller than any requirements for either option. No matter what a variance would be required for construction. Against this, the property could be used for a single-family home, which is only three hundred square feet versus a duplex R two, which is, it would be like forty-eight hundred square feet.
Do we know what the property, when you took down the house, what size was that house that was there?
It, I could not tell you. It was a large old farmhouse with an attached garage.
Like fifteen hundred square feet, twelve hundred square feet.
No, Michelle?
I know, I was going to, I might phone to see if there's any tax that on.
Yeah, if you, um, looked at the garage and, I think there was a shed and the house, I mean, it was a pretty full lot. Pretty full lot that didn't even have a driveway, it was so full. Which is why Michelle said she thought they added that paved right-of-way. I mean, it was pretty, well, it was, you know, if you look at other houses in the neighborhood that are, um, I don't know what to call them, Michelle, non-conforming, I mean, the houses in that neighborhood are on small lots. So all of them, even the single-family housing in that neighborhood are on small lots with not very much room between them.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, maybe the formulation needs to be looked at again. I don't know, it was like that last time.
Right.
Yeah, I can, cause I could live with that. I mean, two families upstairs, downstairs, and we're talking about families.
Well, my only concern is that.
Can I speak? I think just to correct that piece, so it's straight in your, it's not upstairs, downstairs.
It's, it's a.
It's, you can imagine it's east and west, so one family on the west side.
Yep.
Two bedrooms up, one down. One family on the east side, two bedrooms up, one bedroom down.
Okay, I got that.
Different than.
Uh, yeah, I, yep, I'm good with that. But there's an upstairs and a downstairs, both sides.
Yes.
I can live with that. It's, it's, it's not huge, but if we start deviating a lot, well.
Is there gonna be much of a patio? When you say have the patio, how much of backyard is gonna be back there? Is there gonna be much of a patio, when you say have the patio, how much of backyard is gonna be back there for them?
There will be.
Will they be able to put like?
Thirty, well, it'd be thirty feet to the property line to the back of that house.
Okay.
So, so our ordinance says that we have to have thirty feet in the back, fifteen feet in front, well, we're sort of.
You're, you're asking for the front to be shortened.
Yes.
Right.
So we're gonna have a lot of space in the back.
Are you putting up a privacy fence that abouts the other property?
We will, we haven't discussed that yet, but the Housing Commission will. I think it's important for, to maintain good neighbors to do that.
Yeah.
Well, I was especially if you get, you know, kids or people who wanna have a patio out there. Um, I noticed too, you don't have a division between the two patios like I've seen in the past, are they, it's just gonna be an open space for them or?
We've discussed, we will have some sort of division, we just didn't have it on the site plan.
Okay, just asking.
That's a good question. I like that question.
If you notice the front design will have that indentation, the doors are offset on the other side.
I see that, yeah, that's nice, yes.
Yeah, something similar on the back.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause if you're having like, you know, people over for barbecue and stuff and then you spill like, just a little bit more privacy maybe for them, just in my own opinion.
Maybe just as much as a six hole.
Or something, yeah, just something, just something.
Whatever.
You know, just so, yeah.
We even have that behind our townhouses, now our family townhouses have a, a divider.
Okay.
Doors are by each other.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea, April.
So an eight by four, okay.
So moving along, number two, the variance would do substantially justice to the applicant and possibly other property owners in the district in a lesser relaxation of regulation than they requested would not provide substantial relief to the property owner. Four, the la- the size of the property would not allow anything there without a variance of any kind, actually. Again, so lesser variance could allow for a single-family home. I get that. Can we work through that? I probably can. The plight of the property owner is due to a unique circumstance of the property and not a general condition of the neighborhood. The unique circumstance of the property is added is smaller than any requirement listed in R two zoning, many of the surrounding properties are smaller than zoning regulations. Again, the lot hasn't been created recently and there was a house on it at one time. Yeah, okay, yeah, there was. Yeah, it's a small, it's a smaller lot. The less practical difficulty has not been caused by any person presently having an interest in the property. Previous house was deteriorating, so that, yep, had to be, had to be demolished. Was in bad shape, huh?
It was. It was, and I was just looking at this floor plan, I don't wanna get you off your train of thought, Mark, but you know, thirty-four by thirty on one side is like a thousand square foot, so what's sticking out of the ground is like two thousand square foot and I would, in my mind, the garage and the house had to be real similar to that, the previous one.
Okay.
You know, when I do the math here.
Yeah, I mean, the living space is gonna be good. I don't, I don't.
I have another quick, oh, go ahead, I had a quick question in regards to the site plan. In lieu of that, is there room for individual sheds in the back if people wanted to keep things in the back each side, are they?
Um, we talked about sheds and we also have created, um, storage space in the basement.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
That's definitely something that we would look into.
Sometimes people have outside furniture or their barbecue they wanna put away or.
Yeah, we have, we, um.
I know it's a, you have to have anything under, under two hundred square feet without pulling the permit, so I suppose for sure.
Yeah, and with accessory structures, they only have to be six feet from property lines.
So you could put it back along the fence line that you're gonna do then?
Put them back in the corners, yeah.
Okay, alright, just checking on my boxes, remember?
I'm just laughing, cause we have a house down the street from there and we had that big storm like on, uh, Saint Patrick's Day and I got a call from the police department at like ten o'clock at night and they said, the shed.
Oh.
At three twenty-two Second Avenue blew over in the alley, the people never put anything in it and it blew right into the alley. Go in and have people get the shed out of there.
Yeah.
So, but most people fill their sheds up, but.
Well, I'm just asking, maybe if they had some kid toys or something outside or like a pool or, yeah, I'm just looking at the.
Curb appeal is very important to us, so, yes, definitely.
They don't have to have a wall or anything.
Well, no, I didn't mean for, yeah, I didn't mean to like, well, but like, you know, like a barbecue or my lawn, you know, my table and chairs or, yeah, individually or whatever, so, okay, just asking, sorry, America, go ahead.
No, uh, just the last point on number four, again, says it was a non-conforming house there, we all know that, established before zoning, but was demolished. Okay, I get that. Basically, it's not a matter of putting it up, it's a matter of putting it up with a duplex or a single-family.
Correct.
Okay. And, you know, you, you gotta, you got, oh, I wanna put this correctly, you got a lower level living and an upper level living.
Yes.
So, you know, that's okay. And, I'm just, again, I'm just kind of working through this variance of forty-eight hundred versus three hundred.
And they're also asking for the variance in the front too, the distance, um, there, there are a lot with, it's also six feet difference in the front.
Right.
You have to do the.
Right.
That's, that's also part of that.
Right. Well, nobody's, it's, it's not, it's a good thing, don't get me wrong there. And, technically, the applicant could expand the parking lot in the back of the lot if they desired to and would meet ordinance requirements. But you also are, are saying they can use next door to park.
Across the street.
And that, kindness is that expands it a little bit.
Yeah, well, and I think why I said that they technically could, if, you know, the Housing Commission ever chose to sell this property, housing across the, parking across the street's not gonna be an option, cause it's not under same ownership. But there's room to ex- you could fit four parking spaces on that backyard.
Okay, so that would then come at a newer property owner with a variance to put four.
They wouldn't even need a variance, you could add, I mean, they'd be.
They could just add.
You'd have to play the car swap game.
Yeah.
But you could fit, you could fit them back there.
Okay, that just helped.
If you wanted us to add them, now we could, the only thing is that it interferes with potential backyard area for them to hang out and, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, I get, yeah, I get that, well, that, that again, is down the road, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. That actually honestly just helped. So again, we got recommendations, are there conditions we're setting on this?
Well, my only conditions would all be the safety issues. And I would hope that some.
And I'm not sure if they can, they can only address this by going to the police or having them involved.
Right, right.
Or whoever's in charge of roads.
Yeah, I, and I can tell you from experiences, mid-block crosswalks are not encouraged.
No, I meant the one, like you could just extend, the one that's at, um, Second and Jefferson, there's one that's right there that could just go straight across on that corner, would just be straight, it would just, it's not mid, it would just be a continuation of.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
See the one at the very end of the property?
Yeah, just put another.
And that would just put there, they could walk safely somehow.
Or Second Street.
Put like another, put another accessibility, another branch out, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, just on that corner, not in mid, I wasn't thinking of where that, um, opening of the driveway is, cause that's dangerous. I just meant at the end of that, they could walk safely on that corner. They could, but will they? I understand that, well, that's, that's on them, I'm just looking at, just if.
As long as everybody does their due diligence on what they need to do to make it safe.
Right, right.
They can't do anything about that.
No, I understand that, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
That would be my only con- really concern is the safety.
Gotcha.
Versus a single-family home, we wouldn't have that, because you wouldn't be walking across the street to park. You'd have it on your own property.
Okay.
If it was a single-family house.
And we would make sure that was clear, you know, with the, with the, before we signed a lease with somebody and we have parking maps, it, it will be labeled, um, so, you know, and I would just add that, I do really strongly feel that a duplex fits, fits the character of the neighborhood, the multifamily.
And you did say you would dedicate two parts.
Yes. And label them.
For your guys' conditions that you've talked about, that I picked up on, I have designated parking spaces at the Housing Commission's visitor parking and also a privacy fence, those were the only two that.
So now.
Yeah.
Okay.
New value.
Yeah, good.
Good.
Okay, so the, the motion to approve the conditions, the move that they use variance application for four oh second, four oh two Second Avenue seventeen dash eleven dash three three one dash zero zero four be approved to the duplex to be placed on the property. The applicant meets the standards in section thirteen point five and thirteen point six of the zoning ordinance. Uh, but two conditions, one is a private, privacy fence and the second one was, I'm sorry.
Designated parking spaces at housing.
To the Public Housing Commission, make sure that, that is okay. That is the motion. Second.
I'll second, oh, go ahead, go ahead. I'll second the motion.
Okay, and the vote.
Naishram?
Yes.
Amki?
Yes.
Bauton?
Yes.
Nneki?
Yes.
And it passes.
Thank you, it'd be a great project.
Yes.
Taking pictures.
Please be safe, please keep it safe though, please.
We'll make our annual report.
Yes, keep it safe.
And there's, there's two other duplexes there and all that other stuff.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be like, it's the same, oh. Yeah.
I'm gonna watch these crosswalking, but I think. I'm right down on Second Avenue there.
I know, but I just wanna make sure.
It's our children, it's our children who walk through the crosswalk.
My mom, yes.
And.
But the law do.
That's, that's true, let's move on, so we.
Okay.
Um, number three is, uh, the variance of a driveway.
This one's a little bit unique, um, so I'm.
The last one was, but that's okay.
No, this one, this one's even more, I've never come across something like this before. Um, the property is eight oh eight Chestnut Street and eight oh four Chestnut Street that are affected by the variance request or the two requesting the variance really. At some point, so the property owner is asking to expand their driveway larger than the eighteen foot that we allow for, for a drive, residential driveway in the zoning ordinance. At the same time, so that's one request, at the same time, in order to expand it, the neighboring property would also be asking for a variance to allow a second driveway, because, and this is where it's strange, there's an alley that has been vacated between the two properties, well, it's not between the two properties anymore because it's vacated, but there's an alley that is still, acts like an alley, people still access the property like an alley, but it's not technically an alley, it belongs to these two property owners, so when they vacate an alley, general practice is, is they take it and split it down the half and give each property on each side a s- the same amount. And so, it's kind of unique that it's still being used as an alley, even though it's not an alley, the property owners have just always continued to use it.
Just those two.
No, people further down this, this.
We, we're, we're an alley owner or property on Willow and that alley goes behind our house, so we, we own to the middle of that alley, but that alley is used a lot because uh, consumers' energy gets down there to trim trees, other utilities, uh, so it's, it's, it is a used alley, it's just not a city-maintained alley.
Sewer line runs through there.
We'll, we'll get to that in a second.
So, yeah, so it's, it, there is a city, um, infrastructure down there, the sewer line runs down that alley, so city accesses that alley, so what the applicant is requesting to do is to expand his driveway larger and he could do that, he could expand it to the eighteen feet in width. Um, because somewhere here, currently, he, his driveway is approximately eleven feet wide. So he could expand it six more feet, which would get him eight, um, up to the eighteen feet or seven more feet, sorry, that was bad math. But then there's the section that's part of the alley. It, it would just look weird, so, part of the alley would be paved, because he's paving a portion of his driveway and part of the alley.
Big grass.
Would not be paved, so you would have what appears to be an alley that is used as an alley by a number of different entities that would be half-paved and not half-paved.
So it's like an easement, an invisible easement.
Yeah, and there's no eas- I mean, we would have an easement, we would have an easement over our sewer, for our sewer.
That's what I'm saying.
And consumers has, sometimes they have easements, if they not, that, not they work at getting them, but they have the, they have utility rights.
Okay.
Similar to, to access their utility lines. So, it's, that's why I said it's kind of a unique.
I see the picture, yeah.
Yeah, so, he, he by right could pave another seven feet and that would be okay in our ordinance, but then it would leave a portion of that alley used, not paved. And there's already a curb cut there, because it was an alley at one time.
Right, I, from those, both sides, I see that. Okay, I do have some other questions, but I think we get the gist of it.
Okay, it is a strange one.
It's a strange one, okay, weird's not the right word, it's a strange one.
Strange one.
Okay, I can live with that. All right. Who's in favor, who, anybody wants to speak that's in favor of?
Well, this gentleman's the one that. The.
You can go ahead.
The applicant, if you want to add anything. And if it's easier for you to speak from there, you're welcome to do that.
Yeah, we're, we're a small group.
Yeah.
Well, the, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with it being called a second driveway, because her portion of the property's only about five feet. I think the city has a minimum requirement for a driveway. For it to be a driveway, and I think that's bothered some of the neighbors, cause they're trying to understand why I'm trying to have a bigger driveway and then give my neighbor another driveway, but there is no second driveway I'm trying to give her. And the only reason I'm trying to do this is because, you know, the curb cut for my driveway ends at my neighbor's property, everybody else in the neighborhood, their property has a curb cut on the left and right of where their driveway should be, but I don't have that.
Okay.
And right now, whoever had this property prior to us, they run into the same problem with the city, just trying to pave their own approach. And they gave up and put twelve by twelve patio pavers down, there's nobody else in this neighborhood has a dirt driveway or twelve by twelve patio pavers, cause no one's going through this much trouble just to pave a tiny little section of their driveway. It's, it's really putting us through the wringer, just trying to do what we thought was a favor for our neighborhood, just, you know, biting the bullet paying for all this extra cement, so we can have an overall looking driveway, and it's really turned into really a migraine, but, you know, it's, we're kinda in it so deep now, I might as well as be here doing this, seeing what happens, but I, I really don't agree with the characterization that she's asking for a second driveway, because it's not big enough for her. They have a second driveway, it's five feet, it's just, it's there and there's the Salvation Army, they own, I guess they own a house behind Anna's, then there's, I think, two other properties south of that and they each have a garage there. That alley gets a lot of use, I'm surprised the city decided it shouldn't be anymore, but I, before we ever moved here.
Okay.
We're just the type of neighbor. We're just the type of neighbors, if, if there's a small strip of grass between our two properties, we just assume trim it when we're trimming our lawn and that's the right thing to do. When we thought, you know, surely this wouldn't be an issue, but you know, it is, so.
Okay.
If you guys don't wanna approve it, that's fine, we were just trying to take the very, the last dirt approach in this.
We haven't got that far yet.
We haven't got that far yet, so we're, we're, we're listening.
It's, it's been, uh, it's been stressful.
Okay, all right.
Now, you're the property owner, correct? You're the, you're the person that's requested this.
Okay.
No, that's fine, but I'm understanding that you also want a shed, you want concrete for a shed too, correct?
We were thinking about putting a shed in, we wanted to do a, a shed pad towards the south part of the property.
Next to your fence, correct?
Yeah, we don't, this is a, it's a, it's a Florida home, we don't have an anchor or basement.
Okay.
We got no storage in the house, so we thought.
I just wanna understand if that was on the, I was just making sure.
The shed met all zoning requirements.
Okay, so that's not part of this.
Okay.
No, it just.
I, I'd rather.
When we started, it was all one and then we went down this rabbit hole.
Just wanna make sure.
Is there anybody against this? Anybody speaking out? They don't want this idea?
I would like to speak, but I'm not against it, uh, we're in support of it.
Okay, well then, then we'll stay with this support side.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, we are ones that have a three car garage
Yep.
in our backyard, so we use that alley quite a bit. We have a Model T and my husband has a, a truck in that garage and the neighbor's Nista lives right next door and they have a three car garage, very similar to ours. And, um, so that alley is used quite a bit, but we know it's not a city maintained alley that we mow to the center. Uh, we own to the center of the alley and the people on Cherry own to the other center. Uh, so if Mitchell wants paving, uh, we're not opposed to that at all. We just wanna be able to get in and out of that alley when we need to because we have vehicles down there.
Okay, very good. The written material actually is this, is this?
Get your name.
Someone said they don't mind.
That is, so because where they're paving is the neighbor's property.
Yep.
Part of where they're paving is the neighbor's property. He has to give permission.
And you do.
We can't just let someone pave on someone else's property.
Makes perfect sense to me.
So that's what that is.
And that's what, this is basically a permission slip.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good thing. All right.
I have a question.
That's the one.
So, okay. That's the written material, there's no rebuttal. We're into public, we're now into the assessing it. Fact finding, that's what it's called, sorry.
Right. So, you're putting, you're gonna put a curb in now, instead of, and that's all flattened grass right now. So you're proposing you're gonna be putting a curb cut in. Is that gonna affect going over a curb to get in and out of that back area?
The curb cut's there.
The curb, it'll affect the curb.
Already there.
We're looking at, when I see the picture, I'm looking at from curb to curb or the, or the, whatever they call that on the curb apron or whatever it is.
So you're, he's gonna, then almost have concrete up to this, the electrical, put the pole on, is what you're saying.
So view.
This whole approachment is, this whole thing is gonna be all concrete. On the bottom half of this, it's gonna be all concrete. That's what I'm saying, it's gonna be all concrete.
Just up to the sidewalk.
Yeah, I know, but this whole bottom half.
Yeah.
It was all concrete.
Yeah, all kinds, whatever, yeah.
And the grass is too, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's what they're looking at. That's what they're asking for.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, right up, right up to the sidewalk. That's all gonna be, yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I just meant it's gonna go all the way over to here.
No curb cut. Yeah.
Like this whole, this part is gonna be.
No, I think it's gonna go all the way over to.
The other side.
It's gonna be curb to curb.
Curb.
Curb to curb.
Curb, which is.
So you're gonna have a concrete approach then to get into the alley, basically, and, and the invisible alley, kind of.
Well, where's the other?
I just want concrete for my driveway, but there's no curb cut. I was just gonna be a nice neighbor and give everybody in the alley some.
Well, there's, but there's already.
No curb cut, I'm just going curb cut to curb.
Well, that's from, from this section.
It happens to be mostly on my property anyways, so yeah.
Six, here to here, yeah.
Curb to curb.
Five feet of that is.
That's, okay.
So the grass is gonna be gone. That's there right now.
Uh, the driveway grass will be gone, but not somebody's lawn.
Yeah.
No, right, just the drive, just the approach part.
No, thing's going right up to the sidewalk and that's it. Up to the sidewalk, that. Basically, what I used to call those now, they're two tracks. It's a two track going through, you know?
Right, correct.
I mean, okay, the city got rid of it, but everybody still uses it. It's a two track. City doesn't own it, you guys own it, you guys share it. And everybody's happy. And the only thing I was talking about, you know, when, when it goes from curb to curb, that's not changing any of that. I mean, we, they were talking about a three foot apron on either side or something like that, I thought.
We, we, so that, that doesn't change the curb. What that allows is it allows for a turning radius.
Yeah.
So it's something they would do inside the curb, that would change and they can do that if they want. That gives them the ability to flare out a little bit, so.
And that can kinda be allowed a little bit. Oh, yeah, I see it now, I get it. I get it. It doesn't change the curb, the curb's not going away.
Right, no, I, yeah, I just, yeah, I'm just making sure it's what you wanted to do.
Yeah.
To finish, he's gonna like, it's a look finished, it's gonna like a finished driveway.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and maybe someday, some year, they'll just wanna pave all the way back, but that's somebody else. That's not what we're doing here.
I know.
I'm surprised that the city took it away, but that's, that's neither here nor there.
Yeah, I, we looked, Grant did some research to see if we could figure out when it was vacated. Um, it seems like it was vacated sometime in the seventies.
Late nineties.
Or late nineties. I've heard do different numbers, but we couldn't find any record.
Do you know when you took it over or when it?
Well, we moved in that property at six fifteen Willow in nineteen ninety-one and it was
It's already done.
Yeah, so that's over thirty years ago, okay.
Been there for a significant time. Um, the sewer that runs under it, we, I talked with Public Works about where that sewer is and if this paving is gonna be an issue, because obviously.
Yeah, they wanna dig into that.
It's, it, we think, we don't have any guarantee, but we think the sewer, uh, this section would be outside of the paving.
So, look into Mystic, right? I would take it just to make sure.
They probably went, I don't know if they'd have to Mystic to pour concrete.
All right, well, just identify, I guess, uh, where everything is, maybe?
Well, it'd be our guys who go out.
Okay.
Do the Mystic anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we're gonna either give permission or not permission, they're gonna do their due diligence and if something comes up, something comes up.
Okay.
So, going back to the analysis again. Okay, it's gonna look a little odd, all right. I get that, but it's gonna be pavement.
It looks odd now.
Uh, the approach could be used for our permitted purpose without variance, paving to the maximum eighteen feet. That's what they're doing. It, it's still gonna be eighteen feet, that's what we're looking at, right?
No, it's gonna be bigger than eighteen feet.
That's what, okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Oh, from the curb to curb is gonna be a little bigger than eighteen feet.
Yes.
Okay, well, but the curb's there.
Yeah, yes.
The curbs are already there.
That's not gonna change that.
Yes, no.
Okay, I can live with it.
Yes, yeah, and this one is gonna be this and then this is like, so we're going all the way across.
Okay, so the driveway is kinda there, but.
This is the grass area.
Curb maybe go a little bit there, okay, I get that.
Right, so this is the grass area.
Yeah.
And that's his, that's his, that's his existing favors.
Yep.
And then he's adding on this part of it.
Yep, I get that.
Yes.
I get that.
Yes.
Variants do substantial justice to the applicant and possibly other property owners. Unless a relaxation of the regulations, then the request would not provide substantial relief to the property owner. Paving the approach will offer a more permanent solution for those driving the valley. Take you down, sorry. The paving could be done regardless, as stated before, it might look odd. Well, okay, I think if it looks curb to curb, that looks better.
Yeah.
And he's willing to do that, so it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The quiet of the property owners due to the uniqueness of the property and not a general condition of the neighborhood. The alley was given to property owners after its dissolution. It does not create an odd case where shared driving being divided and this drive being the primary entrance and exit. Uh, against the drive spans across multiple backyards. However, though, they got permission, everybody is happy.
They have letter of permission, yes.
I like happy.
Yes.
That's good.
Yes.
The actual practical difficulties has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property. Many of the properties along the drive have changed owners since the time it was vacated. That's probably a true statement. Against vacation of the, the vacation of the alley was prompted by homeowners in the late nineties.
Right.
At least according to secondhand accounts.
It was never officially stated.
I, we looked through resolutions and we couldn't find them, but it also could have been a part of like a larger resolution that didn't spell out this alley specifically. You know what I mean? Like, usually each vacation is done independently and so you can find them.
Yeah.
But if it was done as like a larger package of vacations that they were doing or a different project, possibly, it, it could have not been spelled out so specifically in city records.
But then again, for all practical purposes, it's not an alley anymore. It's a two track that people own and they're driving through, just like you go on a farm. It's a two track.
Right.
And we're just trying to.
Sounds like everyone has respect for it.
And everybody has respect for it, everybody uses it.
Right.
That is a win-win situation, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
So, it comes now to
Okay.
Approval, approval of conditions. I, I can't see a condition to put on there.
Uh-uh, yeah.
The condition was everybody was happy.
Seems written out, yeah, sells out pretty good.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think so, or we deny it.
I agree.
I have another question.
Okay.
No, you will ask.
So, so this will be, this would be the
I think it'll look better.
A move that the non-use variance application for eight oh eight Chestnut Street seventeen dash fourteen dash two fifty-nine dash zero zero seven and eight oh four Chestnut Street seventeen dash fourteen dash two fifty-nine dash zero zero one be approved to pave for a driveway and a right of way between the properties. The applications meets the standards set in section thirteen point five and thirteen point seven of the zoning ordinance. And as an addendum, all parties are in agreement.
Yes.
I second that.
And the vote.
Naismith?
Yes.
Umki?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Lebneke?
Yes.
You got your driveway. So you're good.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
I'll sit there.
You're awesome, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's one of the, you do what you need to do. If anything comes up afterwards, you guys will deal with that, somebody will deal with that. So we're good. And is there any other business going on? Might as well do this officially.
I, I can give you an update on our zoning ordinance if you want.
Is that the audit? Is that part of the audit, one?
No, yeah, kind of, so the city has hired Williams and Works who did our master plan to also help, um, with the zoning ordinance rewrite. Uh, we have met, we had a joint meeting with the city commission and the planning commission to go over the initial audit done by Williams and Works and that audit just kind of spelled out like these are some of your bigger issues that you need to look at, um, you know, like one of them is we have language in there referring to previous state laws or acts that are not in place anymore, because the zoning enabling act has been updated and so, um, just those kind of housekeeping type stuff and then that audit, I can send you guys if you wanna read it, um.
Yeah, it'll be helpful.
Okay, and then the second meeting we've had with them has just been with our committee for the zoning update and we, well, we've had two since the audit. The first one, we just discussed the layout of the ordinance because they wanted to do that first, so as they start working on audit, editing the ordinance, we can put it in this layout that is a little bit easier to read, so like one of the major things in our layout discussion is definitions. Right now, each definition has a section number, so if I need to add a definition to our ordinance, it's not gonna be alphabetical anymore because I'd have to change every single one afterwards to make it alphabetical. So we're now just going to have like A be a section and then all of the A definitions would be under that. So just, just kind of housekeeping type stuff to make the ordinance flow better and make it a little bit easier if we do need to make adjustments to fit those in, um, and easier to find stuff, moving stuff around so that it's easier to find. So that was what our first meeting was about. We didn't really get into any discussion about, you know, language in the ordinance, it was just layout. And then we had a second meeting two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I don't, time goes fast. And, um, those, that meeting was more about setting up a land use table and how that land use table is gonna look. We didn't do any discussion of what's gonna be in each of the land uses or the zoning districts, but just how the table's gonna look. And then we also discussed, um, what the zoning ordinance means, like what is it used for? Right now, it's under section three or article three in our ordinance and it talks about zoning districts and has like how you interpret a zoning map and what the preamble is and, um, all of that information. And so they did do some changes to that language. None of it was very significant. They got rid of the preamble and made a bullet point out of the points that were discussed in the preamble to make it, you know, so you could grab that bullet instead of having to put the whole preamble in something. And then they also, we had, I requested that they add language about like relating things back to the master plan. Um, because our ordinance, I feel like struggles in relating stuff back to the master plan, there, I don't think our master plan is in our ordinance at all, like we don't have those lang- that language in there, so they're adding that, um, and then also like how to in, give information about how to interpret the zoning map if there are interpretation questions. So that's, that's all we've gotten through so far.
Okay.
Um, the good stuff's coming up, so.
Guys will change the RP thing.
That's probably gonna be a big discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you can see by what we do, yeah. Is this something that should be changed? And if not, then correct us and what we gotta do, what we gotta do anyway.
Right, so, yeah, those discussions will probably be in the next couple of months and then I also know they're planning, I don't know the date yet, but they are planning on doing some public open houses before we get too far into any kind of revisions.
Let us know, I would be interested in going, yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, I'll definitely send out flyers, it will be on public, you know, all of our public stuff. There won't be public hearings, there'll be more like open houses. Or information sessions, us trying to.
Like what we did at the master plan.
Kind of like what we did at the master plan, trying to gather some information about what people would like to see, but you can't. Uh, zoning's a little bit trickier to do that for than, than master plans, because master plan's big picture, happy, fun stuff and
We're kinda zoning in.
Zoning ordinance is much
The detail.
Much more of the detail, so, um, are, they're working on that. I haven't seen anything yet on how they plan on zoning.
Get a new book.
Zooming in on those things, so hopefully soon.
We're adjourned.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. See you at the next one. See you at the next one.
I don't know.
It's open, it should be unlocked, it's unlocked starting at five o'clock.
Oh, all right.